It was just a big improvement.
Oh, yeah. I was thinking of you guys.
Well, since we have a full agenda, how about if we start right on time? Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
Okay. The peanut gallery says yes. Awesome. Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Reed Field Select Board on June 17th. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:30. Please join me in the pledge, if you are able.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Advertise and put my son in law.
Oh, so we have a request by writing in the agenda to take item 24137 out of order so that we can select a chair and vice chair. Eric, should we do all the other things at the same time?
I don't see any reason why you wouldn't want us all through that discussion.
Okay, so we'll, if it's to the pleasure of the board, we'll do item 24137 first and then we'll go back up and begin with the regular meeting items afterwards. So the first item of business is to have a motion to select a select board chair and then we'll do a second motion for vice chair.
I'll make.
If, if nobody wants anything to change, just make a motion.
I'll make a motion to elect Catherine for chair for the next year.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, it is unanimous. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. For vice chair, do we have a motion?
I make motion. Vice chair again.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, it is unanimous. Jaren, that was one thing. You're very welcome. I know you had asked if there was something to assist with, so typically the chair doesn't make or second motions unless no one else is speaking. Okay, so we have several things that we need to discuss. One is a note taker and a timekeeper, so someone to help us stay on track. Sean's always done a really good job at the timekeeping, whether it's his job or not. He's really awesome with that.
I'm all about making people stick with what they're good at.
Yeah, I'm happy to continue to have Angelica be an amazing note taker and I will continue to do some timekeeping.
Okay. We do the quarterly financial warrant reviews typically, well, there are four quarters, so typically each of you take one of those quarters and I act as fill-in as chair, but if there's someone who can't, I'm happy to take a quarter on. Dave, you're just finishing, so you probably don't want to roll into another three months.
Well, I think Sean wants that three months, so if I'll take what, what I don't mind.
Is that true?
Yeah, I actually do like July, August, September. It's easier for me. Works for my schedule.
Oh, those are easy months.
Well, Angelica did highlight our easier months, but it was more just it worked easier for me.
Oh, I want those too.
Oh, see, now the truth comes out.
Okay, so Sean wants to take this first quarter, July, August, September.
Jaren was telling me that he likes to start off hot, like, like throwing right in the fire. Would you like to do that?
I can do the second one.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be good to meet up.
October, November, December. So you guys, who wants January?
Do you want to do it the same as last year? I think you took January and I took the April.
Sure, okay. Yeah, sounds good.
You've got this right, Angelica. Okay. Who wants to be the Fairgrounds Working Group rep?
Surprise.
Okay, Sean. Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, I'll continue if no one objects. Age Friendly Committee rep.
I did not do a good job of that. I started off making all the meetings, but then wound up in Portland with my grandson and my granddaughter a lot of the time because they meet Wednesday morning during the week and.
That makes it hard.
So I did not do a good job of that. I like it, but I just didn't.
Do we need a rep, Eric?
No, and, and you know, attending the meetings isn't necessarily the biggest part of any of these things, really, just being a board liaison, making sure you have a relationship of some kind and a communication outside of the communication I have with them, but I think that it's probably okay if you don't have, if you don't get to every meeting.
Okay, I don't mind doing it. I did some good, you know, we did some good work.
I agree. I helped myself.
Okay, so we'll keep Steve on that. Angelica, did you hear that? We're keeping Steve. Yep.
Can you believe that?
If Teresa wasn't bothering you. The Reed Field Enterprise Committee rep.
I'll do that one.
Okay, that's Jaren, First Park rep. You want to do First Park too?
Okay.
You guys got a good one.
Okay.
We're gonna say no, we're gonna suck you in.
There's one that's not on here, but I guess we'll appoint it when we appoint the committee and that would be for the open space plan working group.
Yes.
So everyone just keep in mind, if there's someone who's interested in that, well, yes, Jaren would love to do that because you can't be on conservation and do it, right?
I don't see any issue with making that appointment now.
Okay, is that all right with everybody? And we need three Board of Assessor members, one to act as chair and two to be the assessors.
I'll do that again.
I'll do that again. I like that.
I'll, I'll, I'll join this time. I haven't done it.
Okay, and you guys elect your own chair, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, wow. All right, now we have a whole bunch of appointments. First up is Dana Tarian as an alternate member of the planning board. If you want to ask him anything, you may, or we can just take a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Dana's application as an alternate on the planning board.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Thank you for stepping forward to do this. You've served on town committees previously, so we don't have to interview you, correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
If you want to say anything, feel free.
As you probably are aware, planning board alternates often end up voting because members often can't make all of the meetings that they have, so the alternate is a really important role, so. All those in favor? Unanimous. Next is a slate of, of re- a slate of reappointments for municipal boards, committees, and commissions. Oh my, let's see. I'm guessing this is long, so if we know what page we're on here.
This is the reappointment, correct?
Yes. Okay, so does someone want to read it or would you like me to read it?
I'm good. I can go for it.
Okay, so just do them all at once.
Yeah, and, and the terms as listed in the packet, so for 30 Mile River Association, Andrew Tolman, Age Friendly Committee, Deb Carey, Elaine Cates, Margaret Livingston, Appeals Board, Holly Ramelow, Henry Winnebourn, Budget Committee, Christine Salmon, Cemetery Committee, Marion Perry, Grace Keen, Tom Malukie, Moore Norris, Andrew Tolman, Conservation Commission, Jerry Bly, Enterprise Committee, Jessica Gorton, Library Board of Trustees, Pat Clark, Jackie Druin, Deb Peel, Miranda Cook Dam Committee, Tom Malukie, Rec Committee, Jeff Carlson, Tom LeBrie, Greg Lineback, Matthew Magnuson, Amy Tarian, Road Committee, Brian Tarbach, Trails Committee, Megan LaChapelle, and Rob Peel.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Thank you to everyone for re-upping. That's amazing to have so many people who are willing to continue serving.
You guys already signed 12 to 15 times.
We'll, we'll take care of it throughout the meeting.
We have a cover sheet where you can sign them all at once.
Let's stick to the cover sheet then.
Do we not need to sign each one?
You don't, just, just, just the cover sheet.
Okay. All those in favor? It is unanimous. The next item is the reappointment of Eric Dyer as Town Manager, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Road Commissioner, Welfare Administrator, and Public Access Officer.
I'd like to appoint Eric Dyer as Town Manager, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Road Commissioner, Welfare Administrator, and Public Access Officer with hopes that he will continue to delegate as many of those responsibilities and duties therefore assigned.
With the people to assist him.
I was thinking he should do a couple more things.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Other than is anybody willing to do any of this, take any of these responsibilities for you, Eric? Take some of it to load off?
Yeah, they are, and actually the way it really, I mean, Catherine was being mostly serious, but I do have tremendous staff support. Really, it's the title that I have and the responsibility to make sure it's happening appropriately. My deputy road commissioner, Massines, does a ton of the road commissioner work. You know, the front office staff, and Crease do a ton of the finance work. So really, it's, it's the high level stuff that I, that, you know, working with. I've been getting involved if I need to in details, but, but really, it's an administrative structure more than an operational structure. So I, I do what I need to, but the rest does get delegated pretty well to staff, so.
When the buck stops, it's on Eric's desk.
Right.
That's basically what happens.
But they, but they do, like I said, tremendous amount of work, so.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Consider the reappointment of Chip Stevens as Health Officer.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Chip Stevens as Health Officer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, we are efficient.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Karen Peterson as the transfer station manager.
Do I have, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor?
I'd like to make a motion.
Excuse me, opposed? Linton is opposed. The other fourth motion carries. Thank you. You'd like to what?
Make a motion that we reappoint Lee Mank as fire chief.
Do I have a second? I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor? Unanimous. The next, yeah, go ahead.
I would like to take the next two together and accept the resignation of Jaren Shaw from the Conservation Commission and the Enterprise Committee, as he is now sitting right there.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor? You're allowed to vote. There aren't grounds to abstain. You need to vote either yes or no.
Yes.
Okay, you have to have a true conflict of interest to abstain and that's not resigning, is it?
Missed one.
Okay, all right, so we did that in, wow, 12 minutes. We are awesome. Going back to our regular meeting items, number 24-135, the select board minutes of June 3rd.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the select board minutes as presented.
Second.
Another great job, Angelica. Thank you very much. Any discussion? This time you can't vote. You already knew that. I just thought I'd say it. All those in favor? Four and one abstention. Jaren was not present. Warrants 24-136, 51 and 52. This will be Dave.
This would be mine. Some big numbers on this one. $338,036.42 for the RSU pavement, payment. We had $890, John Cushion for a plunk culvert. Had $3,451.55, $1,190.70, and $71.50 for the uniforms for the youth sports teams. $1,115.82 to Gorel Palmer for the sidewalk engineering. $8,115.50 to Kennebec Regional Development. And $6,333.84 for the dispatches fees for the state domain. And the one question I had was, what was the $13,544 to the fish, inland fisheries and wildlife? What is that?
I'll have to look. Teresa looks like she knows the answer.
Yeah.
Teresa's recognized.
I'm sure she knows the answer.
So those are like the licenses and registration. I assume that probably was. Yeah.
Is that once a month or once a quarter? Once a month, okay. Thank you.
That's about it for big numbers.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve warrants 51 and 52 in the sum of $414,851.42.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, it is unanimous. Communications, we have select board communications. This is a time for any general information announcements, et cetera. Anyone like to say anything? I know Sean wants to say something.
Yeah, so I just want to say a massive congratula- congratulations and thank you. After the election results on Tuesday night, some of us worked to have a concession stand at the minors baseball team Round Robin on Saturday. And so from Wednesday morning to Friday, we collected donations and worked together to put on the concession stand. Myself and our family ran the stand all day and amazingly, we made $1,246 profit. So for one day, that's a pretty good start to our project. So I really thank all those local businesses and individuals that donated food, snacks, drinks, and whatnot, and their time to helping out. It was a big success. What was cool was, you know, we had Wayne and Winthrop were the team, we had two Winthrop teams, a Wayne team and Reed Field team playing, and they were just as excited about our project because they'll be there routinely with their kids. So they were happy to be donating with us and be a part of it, so thank you, everybody. Awesome start.
Thank you, Sean. That's just really cool.
So I missed the volunteer breakfast, but I think it was an excuse to abs.
Well, it wasn't actually required. So first I want to welcome Jaren Shaw to the select board by vote of the town of Reed Field. Welcome, Jaren. I think you'll come up to speed quickly because you've been attending our meetings for the last three, four, or five months. So you're pretty familiar with what we're doing, but anyway, we will have a new member orientation shortly, right, Eric?
Yeah, we were talking about that just before the meeting.
Excellent, okay. And then on the volunteer appreciation breakfast, it went really well. Jaren and Steve and I were all able to be there. I did tell everyone what Sean asked me to, about where he was and what they were doing. Yeah, it went really well. We had two Spirit of America awards. It's okay to announce them now, yes?
Absolutely.
Okay, they were presented. One was given posthumously to Ralph Eno for his service specifically for the food bank in Reed Field at the Miranda Cook Community School. Had a nice chance to talk about him and Penny was there with her whole family. And Bruce Burgoyne got up and spoke also. It was very touching. And then I gave a long spiel on, on our community award. I gave a whole lot of history of the library and how we finally came together and got the whole building done. And we gave a community award to the volunteers of the Reed Field Library Second Floor Project. Melissa Small was able to be there, our librarian, and I think there were six members of the library volunteers there. Not all from the board, but they have a lot of volunteers in addition to their board. It was a really nice spread put on by the weather vane. They were extremely hospitable, really friendly, excellent food. Definitely think we should do it again. People who were there said how much they liked it and would we please do it again, so. That was great and.
Was confirmation from the audience on that? Just want to highlight that.
Yes, okay. And Angelica and Kristen were both there with their spouses. So we had good representation and Eric was on the trek volunteering his time raising money for, is it cancer? On cancer, right? Yep, so trek for me.
So, yeah, I'm sorry I missed it.
That's okay. Next year, we will schedule it when it's not Trek Day and hopefully not the breakfast day for the union meeting house. Oh, well.
Or Father's Day weekend.
We're fine. So when we have our retreat, we're going to set our volunteer appreciation date then, so we'll be first. Okay, anyone else? Staff communication, Eric has a treasurer's report from May.
Okay. Covers the month of May. Our accounts are in balance and there was no unusual activity. We did have one check that we had to reissue because it was lost, so there was one, one little anomaly there. But outside of that, everything appeared to be normal. This report covers that the month of May revenues and expenses should be at about 92% of all else being equal. We, we do have journal entries for the month that are down slightly, but up for the year-to-date. We use journal entries to track just our general level of activity, but really, everything is fairly normal in that respect. Real estate payments are up for the month and for the year-to-date. Both are tracking as expected, about six or eight percent above where they were last year, in large part because of those RSU increases last year and a small one from town. Transfer station revenues are down for the month. And a small one from town. Transfer station revenues are down for the month, but they are up for the year-to-date still. So that's a positive trend. We've just seen things kind of quiet down in May. Karen and I were talking about that, that for whatever reason, it's been a little bit quieter spring than what we've seen in the past. Motor vehicle revenues are improving and they are effectively static for this month relative to last, to last May. But again, they're, they're just under last year's total. So while we were expecting a draw, we're actually within 2% of where we were last year, which still puts us well above our budgeted estimate. So we're, we're doing just fine on motor vehicles. I'm just amazed that people keep buying these cars. Teresa and Angelica see it all the time. People come in with an $80,000 vehicle. It's, it's pretty amazing. We have had some losses there due to the state program of giving full exemption to disabled veterans. Certainly respect the cause, but it is another unfunded state mandate. So I just wanted to point that out, that, that, that just means other taxpayers have to cover that. And I'm willing to do it. I think many others are. But it does affect the bottom line and take money out of the coffers. So.
So you're prudent, underestimating revenues pays off.
Pays off for once.
Right.
No, usually does. But total receipts are up for the month and for the year-to-date. They're within reason. Again, we expect to see those things increase in large part because of the tax revenues. Road expenses are over budget. So this is the time of year where we start seeing things tickle or go over the budget. And roads, certainly, we knew this was going to happen. We had $40,000 to $60,000 out of those two storms this past fiscal year. And I'd say closer to 60. And so we lost, we lost that money. We will get a large portion of it back, but we have to wait for the federal government to work through the process. We're just wrapping up our FEMA reimbursement program. And it will be several months before that money comes back in. So it'll skip the fiscal year. But it won't, it won't have a long-term impact on our finances, is what I'm saying. It just looks bad for now. And we will probably still come in a little bit under budget, once you account for all of those inputs and outputs. With, let's see, yeah, so I noted in my report that some of those costs will be reimbursed. And if we do have anything that isn't covered, we can pull out of the reserve account for that. So that's the report for the month. Things really are straightening out and looking as they should. This is the time of year when you don't normally see anomalies and I don't see any. So.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
All right.
We will move on to, back to the agenda, public communication. I'd just like to start that off with not doing that. Noting that we did receive draft minutes from the cemetery committee. And we thanked them for that. We didn't have it necessarily listed on the agenda tonight, but always appreciative to see what's going on. And at this time, I know we received an email from Eric earlier today about a grant application. And Jerry Bly is here, so this would be a good time to start off with that.
And before Jerry starts talking, I just want to say that I'm really glad he's here because I want to thank him for the tremendous amount of work that he has put into this project and will over the next several months move this grant process forward. So Jerry, just thank you so much for all the help.
Thank you.
That was a lot of reading and a lot of work.
Well, you didn't have to read it, but yes.
Yeah.
So I'm Jerry Bly. I'm one of the co-process leaders of the Fairgrounds Working Group. And as you well know, the two warrant articles regarding the fairgrounds passed handily at town meeting. One of those was specifically to authorize the town to submit a land and water conservation fund grant application. That has to occur by the end of the month. I've sent you the draft of that. Other committees and members are providing feedback this week and it'll get finalized next week. I'm meeting with Eric tomorrow to go over some of the details on that. But you just need to do whatever you need to do to authorize Eric or somebody to write a, to sign a cover letter to submit that grant before the end of the month. I understand you don't have other meetings in June. So. I'm happy to answer any questions. But you know, this is hopefully going to provide half the money. So basically close to $500,000. We don't really have a plan B for, to substitute for the land and water conservation fund grant. I'm quite optimistic. We will receive it. And it's a great project. It fits their guidelines really to the T. So. And if you have any comments on the application itself, feel free to get them, as I say, to me this week. We'll incorporate them and finalize next week.
Do you have any idea how long they typically take to award?
So we should have an idea of whether we're a successful recipient. Probably by the end of the summer, so by September. So they have a scoring committee and we can hear back from that. As is no doubt not a surprise to you, even though we know we sort of are going to get it at that point, there are several steps. So the state has to formalize it, prepare a project agreement, send it to the feds, the National Park Service has to approve that. And we will be on a fairly tight, tight timeline to get it all approved if we want to construct as we do in 2025. And so we're going to have to move quickly, not only making sure that that grant moves forward, but also complete the design work and begin the permitting work and all of that. So.
That's great. Can I ask you in one other way, what groups this is going to serve? Because it seemed like they asked you about 20 different ways. What groups were going to be served by this grant? That was just an amazing amount of work that you put into that. And we, at least I know this board is indebted to you. That is 16 pages of just answering over and over.
I know.
Really well.
Having to come up with, having to come up with different ways to say the same thing.
So what we need is an authorization to have Eric sign. Does he need to create the cover letter?
I mean, I can help do that.
Okay, we need Eric to sign the application for this grant. So we have to make a motion to do that.
So I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the grant application cover letter.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Excellent.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. On another note, Eric, I had some discussion with members of the row committee at the volunteer appreciation thing. And they said there's also something that they will need submitted for the sidewalk grant by the end of June.
You talking to Mike LaBerge?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll be coordinating with Mike and the other main DRT staff on all the, all the pieces of that. Because we do have a project coordinator that we work with, Brian Keizer. And of course, Mike is involved. He tries to stay at arm's length because it's kind of partly in his program. So we try to keep a little bit of separation there. But yes, that we have, we have a lot of work to do quickly. And then just ongoing work over the next year and a half on both of these projects. That's going to be pretty significant.
Do you need anything from the select board before the 30th of June?
No, not that I'm aware of at this point. If I do, I'll, I'll find a way to get it taken care of. But I believe that the town meeting vote is all that was required. I might have to sign something. But those signatures are essentially assumed in the, in the vote and the process we've been through so far. So.
Okay. So this was public communication. It, members in the audience, we have one who would like to speak. And then we'll open it up for anyone online.
Good evening. Marty Hanisch, Sturdivan Hill Road. I think it would be a nice touch for a public acknowledgement of Carol Doran Bose's service as a member of the board over the past couple of years. As someone who's followed the board work, it's very obvious she was a dedicated and hardworking board member. And if the board is not going to, it does not have the habit of acknowledging service, I'd like to just make my comment.
Thank you, Marty. I think it's appropriate to thank Carol for her service. She was a board member for three years and we appreciated her input. She did not win the election, which is why she's not here. So thank you, Carol. Is there anyone online who would like to make a comment? Are you in the chat?
Yeah.
There is no one. Okay. So at this time, we are going to have a workshop with the select board and the budget committee. And I'm going to say that we have a recess for two minutes so that we can figure out how we're going to seat everybody and then we'll continue. So recess for two minutes. Eric, do we want to just kind of?
Yeah.
Are you cold? We went to Fielder's last night and I put a sweater on and I was still cold in my sweater. I did just hear the door open. I don't know if that's someone coming up for us. But in any case, are we all set? Teresa, do you need to be near a mic? No. Okay, Bill, I guess we are ready. Okay, I will call the meeting back to order at 7:05. Greetings, Mr. Durgen.
This is a big workshop?
Yes, for the budget committee.
I'd love to stay for nine minutes.
Did you want something? We could squeeze you in. Did you want to say something?
I always want to say something. Could you start off with one?
If you, would you like to have a public comment?
Hi, I'm, today I apologize. I was at the library and Melissa's gone, so I had to close up. So my name is Greg Durgen. I live down on 41. And I try to make the first meeting when there's some new elections to congratulate the people who were elected and hope everything goes well. Wanted to just quickly mention, thank you to the board for putting on the volunteer breakfast that I couldn't attend, but it was very nice to do that. And the elections went really well, too. That's Kristen and company, Angelica. That's all. Can I leave now?
You may. I'll just, I'll just give you the update. I won't make it take long, but we gave out two Spirit of America awards.
Yes, we heard, I heard.
You did hear. Okay, great.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Well done on that one. Absolutely. And the volunteers who did all that work in the library upstairs, including yourself.
Thank you.
Okay. So thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Have a good board meeting.
Okay, we will. Once you get out of here. So at this time, we're going to have a joint workshop to discuss policy related to the capital investment plan, special revenue accounts, capital reserve counts, and general accounting structure of the town of Reedfield. Special project or specific projects and expenditures will not be discussed in detail. So this is a high-level look at how the new accounting system has been put in place, what's, what the accounts are and what's in them and what the description is of what they're going to be used for. There are 30 accounts. Is that correct, Eric?
Pretty close, yeah.
So we're looking at about three minutes max on each account. That makes the 90 minutes, which is why we don't want to have a ton of discussion because then we'll be here till 10 o'clock.
And I'll just say, I did update on the website, independent of the agenda and the packet, the two pieces for this, first being the actual draft, which I did correct. Jaren had noted a, in error, the enterprise description. And there, there are others that I've found out about, but it is a draft. So what I've done is put that up there. Also, I added what is referenced as an appendix, one of the descriptions, short description really, of the accounts and their estimated reserve balances over time. So they are able to, the board and the public are able to take a look at that and see where we are relative to the proposed ranges. So I think those two documents have independence. You have to chase that down through the packet should be helpful. And this is a draft document. Everything is open for discussion. The policy that was outlined really is a kind of a combination of current practices and the direction that we received from our auditors as far as how we wanted to set this up. And also communication with the select board and budget committee about how you would like to see some of these accounts managed. Also discussions with finance staff. And I do want to thank Teresa for all of her work in helping to put the numbers together and track them over the years. This is going to be added work for, for us as staff, but I think in the end, it will be a better result and give us a lot more clarity on where we're headed. And us, I mean, the public, the select board, the budget committee, anybody involved with these discussions. But this is a starting point and it would be a policy that would be adopted by the select board. How involved you want to be with bringing in the perspectives of the individual boards and committees that might be affected or individual staff is really up to you. But I think that it is important to think about this in that context, that this is a select board policy which can be modified really at any time. And, but, but is there to be a guiding document to help with all of this work that we're all doing together. And it did come out of discussions with, with members of the public and board members. So I think it's responding to questions. And it's also timely in that it is the new upcoming structure that we're trying to present. We had always had a number of these accounts in different ways, but we never had true clarity on what their purpose was or what the definitions were, or the, you know, dollar amounts that we might want to see in there. And we just kind of eyeballed it. And that's been great for a long time. And certain accounts probably had more work than others. But in this way, we have everything in one spot and we can reference it when we do have these discussions about, about budget and reserve accounts and about our new accounting structure and how everybody, everything and everybody fits together. And the first part of this, the first three pages, I think, are some of the most important. And I spent a lot of time trying to craft language that was inclusive and, but also clear. Because the select board does have more of a role than other boards and committees. And that's, and that's okay. That's how we're structured. And I wanted to make sure that the staff, you know, roles and responsibilities were also outlined. Because that clarity, even though not everybody will agree with how things are structured or who has what role, it's there. And I think it's, it's good to work it and to change it to the way, the way the board and the budget committee would like to see it. But I think having that component is really important, that policy piece up front. So I probably put, you know, six or eight hours in this over the past two weeks, just trying to pull this basic stuff together. But I think it's a good, again, a good format. But I think it's a good, again, a good format, good template. Happy to take any recommendations on changes. But I really do hope that you can have a bit of a discussion about those first three pages and the structure of this so that I can know what to revise and change and then get into the details of, well, you know, all the 30 accounts. So that's my piece on it for now.
So when is it you're looking for feedback from us?
Today and over the next few months as we continue to, you know, work through this. This, this won't be done tonight, I don't, I don't believe. So I think that we're looking for this to be happening over a few months, but we have a workshop, so it's an opportunity to get a lot of work done tonight.
I think one thing that was helpful for me that happened just around the time of town meeting was from the cemetery committee. Maybe it was at our last public hearing that we had. The cemetery maybe over budgeted last year. You're going to set me straight on this. And so had money that they were, were turning back in and then they did not budget again for that this year because they realized that they didn't need those funds. And that's, I think, what we were hoping to get out of this process is that people would realize that if they've got excess and it was for something that didn't end up happening, then you need to look at it and say, well, is it going to happen next year? If it's not going to happen next year, then don't budget for it again because it's just going to get turned back in. So it helps us to be more precise in what we're asking for.
Absolutely. And there are a number of other benefits to that accounting structure, which are, you know, touched on in this. But I think that that was a big one. And the cemetery committee really did. And many committees, they're, they're doing more and more work, right? They're becoming more and more active, more and more involved. And they have more and more questions and there's more and more opportunities for us to have conflict or overlap or inefficiency. And so this policy, whether it's the age friendly group expanding what they do and applying for more grants, or the library doing more work and more programming and wanting to know how to handle reimbursements for a certain, for the, what was it, the service, the van, the interlibrary loan that just got canceled. These boards and committees are doing the work of the town, so it's important for them to be working in a structure that's clear and, and to the benefit of the municipality. And that's really what I hope we're able to do with this accounting structure and the policy.
Anybody else have any comments at this point on those first couple of pages?
Marty? Yeah, question. Right up on the special revenue accounts. First of all, I'm not sure if Eric mentioned that the last sentence, this is 16 separate capital reserve accounts that should be special.
That's a good catch, Marty. Thank you.
And why are we calling those accounts special revenue?
That's the, the term that was recommended by the auditors. And in part is because it is, they act multi-purpose, so you have money coming in and going out. So it is something that is not, it's almost like a hybrid between an operating and a capital type account. So that they, and it makes sense to me that they did kind of classify those as being different from a traditional capital reserve and use that term special revenue. So that came from the auditors.
And one of the comments, oh, actually, sorry, question about these types of accounts, these groups. I think it would be helpful to indicate whether these are the kinds of accounts where at the end of the year, any unexpended funds remain in the fund, you know, unless the board, the select board chooses to change the, reduce the balance of that fund as opposed to the routine operating funds where at the end of the year, any unexpended funds relapse to the general fund automatically. Am I being clear on that?
Yeah, you are. And I guess the, the short answer is that all of these counts are being separated from operating reserves so that operating reserves do not carry forward unless otherwise specified, all of these accounts carry forward at the end of the year.
I would just suggest that, first of all, this is great, you know, to have all of this information so that it's, it helps us keep clear on, you know, what, what the, what kinds of accounts we have. But also to indicate that these, the balances do not automatically, the unexpended balances at year end do not automatically relapse to the general fund. But also to include something about the board's prerogative to increase or decrease the amounts in these different reserves.
That's a really good point that we didn't necessarily touch on in the description of the select board roles. That they do, the board really does have the authority to manage these accounts actively. So I will look at adding some language around that because this money is all here because the voters approved it for these purposes, right? So now that money is approved, the select board does have broad discretion over how it's used. I would, of course, suggest discretion on how and where and when you pull that money and without getting, you know, voter approval for things that might be more substantial or larger sums or things like that. But you do, as a board, have that authority to move these funds for purposes that are outlined in the, in the policy essentially and that are, were approved by voters. So that's a good point, Marty. Thank you.
A final comment, and I, you know, this is the first time I'm seeing this great resource. But if it's not mentioned anywhere else, I think it's also helpful for each of these these accounts, these relatively permanent, the long lasting accounts, to have a description for each one, the purpose of this account is so that, you know, we all know what it's for.
So we do have that when we get to the next.
That's on each account already.
We have, it's a repeating template, basically, but yeah, that is included.
That's great.
It's a short description, but I think that brevity is really important with this stuff because if you can't say in two sentences, then we might want to be thinking about what we're doing.
Can't say in two sentences if you've got three counts.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, and then it, then it becomes really directive instead of broad. And it's supposed to be broad, right? And then specific projects get pulled out of it, so.
Eric, I was curious. Like, for instance, the ARPA funds, which we know is going to be depleted. Is there a name that we could have for that, that account that is in relation to just those sort of circa? There's probably going to be other funds that we're going to benefit from in the coming year as the Build Back Better and stuff funds are disseminating across regions. So is there a naming category for that that talks about what the general description purpose that instead of it being ARPA, because it's not really ARPA and a little bit probably, right?
Federal funds?
That was just a simple thing I was wondering.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And so, I mean, I can make that change. I mean, this is, this is part of this, is the process. So I agree completely. At the end of 2026, there should be $0 in that account. Or we have to explain why not, but we're, we're well on track to, to zero that out. But yeah, I think we can change it to rename something like federal funds or.
Yeah, because I don't want you to have to cover the new account in a year if there's a different pool of federal dollars that we have to manage, right? That has those similar limitation structures that we have to abide by.
Yeah, no, and then a lot of those federal funds do have the same program requirements. Nope. So I think that I'll just make a note to change that to federal, federal, federal grant funds or something similar. Does that work for you?
Andy?
I have just an editorial comment, kind of in the middle of the whole thing. See, it looks like there was a bleed through from heating assistance to legal services in the notes.
Yes.
I'm pretty sure that we aren't applying bottle funds to our legal services. I understand the copy and paste issue. I've had it happen to me many times.
Yeah, I laughed for two or three hours of that. I was, I was, I'm surprised that it makes more.
I wish that that would cover any of them.
Yeah, pocket change.
We can always hope.
No, and there was another one that I did correct that Jaren had pointed out with enterprise fund. The description for enterprise fund was incorrect. That's been corrected in the version that was posted on mine along with this hard copy here. So I will collect, correct that legal services slash heating fund issue as well.
I mean, the heating funds look fine, it's just.
So now that people are into the different ones, Eric, do you want to just run through these?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll start by just going through the format because that is, I think, part of the flow of the document. And just say that the account listing, it's standardized. I wanted everything to be uniform. Depending on how this goes, I, I'd like to try in, in the future to possibly integrate this with our active, live account tracking that we do in Excel. We might have to input data from Trio into it, we do currently, to do this outside tracking. But if there's a way to actually have the estimated current account balance in here, I think that would be extraordinary, right? Having it as an appendix is great, but having it right here in this information would be useful. But anyway, long story short is we do have standardized information here that is basic account information. The description, as Marty said, is key. Allowable expenses, and this is where I got creative, right? The, the account description was generally, I had a pretty solid idea. I might have made some suggestions here and there on why I think the purposes should be, but generally speaking, those are pretty firm. The allowable expenses, I did get a little bit creative and try to say, where I know things have been spent, but also where I think they could be spent in the future. And I also tried to say if there were any explicit exceptions, right? So capital items is one where normally for buildings, it would include all town buildings. But, but no, it explicitly, specifically excludes transfer station because that's funded separately. So there are a few things like that to keep an eye on when you look at the allowable expenses. The affiliate boards and committees, these really are the groups that have long-term interest or investment in. It's not, I wouldn't quite call it a stewardship role in most cases. In some cases, it comes close, like with the cemetery or library. But they, they're again advisory. These are committees that are advisory only. These are not. And I'll just say, I say it in the text, I'll say it again here. These funds do not belong to the boards and committees. They belong to the town of Reedfield and to the select board to manage with the input of these affiliate committees. And so in some cases, I've referenced ones that had roles in the past, and those may or may not want, need to stay. But in the future, I think everybody should look at these and affiliate really is the key word there. They're instrumental, they're invaluable, but they're, these are not funds that they, that they own. The affiliate staff, similarly, you know, no staff, no, no department head, you know, has control over these funds. It truly follows the traditional process of voting with the select board being the executive and the town manager being the administrative side of these things. And so we all have roles and this is just to help identify when you talk about affiliate staff, affiliate boards and committees, who ought to be at the table when we're having discussions about this money and how it's spent? But again, it's not giving any one group or individual control or ownership of those funds. And then notes at the bottom really is just a way for me to offer a little bit of history. And I hope that we can get a lot of input from the select board and also the boards and committees that might be involved on some of the notes. We're not looking for a page. Again, we want to keep this concise, but certain things are really important to know about these accounts. Like the ball fund, we can say, or the heating fund, it's important to note that that's traditionally come from, from ball of money. We're actually at a point with that account when we talked about it, where we have to make some changes because we're building, building, building a fund and the input is exceeding the output consistently. So those kind of notes are important, but we're not trying to get into the minutia, right? We're just in the high level stuff. So are there any really questions from the board or the budget committee about the structure? Things that you think might be overstated or understated? Anything you'd like to see added to this format that we have?
I've seen anyone with anything.
What you mentioned about linking that to the actual account balances, is that why you're getting into it at some point possibly?
I think long term, yeah, it'd be great.
Having a live version of this, if you pull it up, it says actual.
Yeah, that would be.
So minimum maximum, that's actually easy to figure out.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, the reason I say eventually is because after this year's audit and after we get the draft numbers for the FY, for the starting balance for FY '25, then we will, because of this new accounting structure, be able to run a single report and get account balances and get it all together. And that will be very, very helpful because that's one of the problems we were trying to solve with this was not having that information readily available. So, yeah.
Great.
But I will note in the, in the, on the website and also in this handout, for each of these accounts, I hope that we can just take a quick minute when we go through and just check. I have put in thresholds that are recommended. These are my recommendations. The board, the budget committee may think it's, you know, should be more, should be less. Totally open to changes to my wild guesses here. But what I did do is I went through and said, I highlighted anything that was outside of the threshold, right? So you can do conditional formatting on these things. And so, for example, anything that's red is either out of compliance under the proposed balance numbers on the high side or the low side. So it's, that just explains what this form is, what it looks like. And again, these are estimated balances, estimated at the end of this fiscal year. And then, once again, estimated at the end of the next fiscal year. Because I think it's important for you to know where things are, but also where they're headed, right? And so those thresholds are actually based on what we think things will look like at the end of the fiscal year that we're going to be entering on July 1 for reference, so.
I noticed there's a couple of other 97 accounts that don't have balances associated with them. Is that because there isn't any or because we haven't gotten there yet? You know, the cemetery expansion in the Reedfield beach.
We haven't gotten there yet with this document. I wanted to focus on the main, the main reserves and the main capital accounts. But I just ran out of time on trust funds.
I know the cemetery committee will ask whether there's money in the cemetery.
Exactly.
I mean, I'm really pleased to have a current balance for perpetual care. It's been a, it's one more thing to ask town staff to do when they're already too busy. And, you know, it helps us give better advice as a cemetery committee.
We're going to help, I hope the other boards and committees feel the same way about the reserve balances they're affiliated with, so.
Eric, I have a question about what's the plan and structure for fundraising accounts and how is that going to be managed for the fairgrounds project?
So I had a note in here, I think I put it in before the vote on when we get to that account. The intent is that it would be run through the town properties, I believe is where we put it. Let me look. I believe that's in the town properties at this point.
You have Ball Field there, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. So then, so then, yes. So we would be running, running it through that account for money in and money out. And some of these counts may, may end up running negative balances because we will, I noted that on a couple of them. Because we will be reimbursed, there's reimbursement based programs. So we will be running a balance sheet negative on a couple of these sidewalk and fairgrounds until we get that reimbursement in, which we'll be working on, I'd say monthly or quarterly, depending on how, how all that works. But with more specifics, I think probably should wait for that discussion until after we get through or until we get to that account.
I think we're ready. Let's run through them. Let's run through them.
Okay. Um, administrative technology, so that's page one. Um, so it's available to cover major, you want me to just run through the description and, uh, or do you just want to take questions or comments while we're here?
I think that one's pretty self-explanatory. I, I, I don't want to speak for everybody. I don't think you need to read to us all the things.
Yeah, I wouldn't say go to each room and anybody has anything to say about it or not.
I, I like that, Dave. I like that a lot.
Yes. So Eric, the kinds of issues we were having with Trio, which you got solved, which is amazing. It wasn't, was it Trio?
It was Trio.
Yes, okay. With the property tax information being live and available online. We've got that resolved, which is great, but there's, so things that are cloud-based, if we have to move to that, is that from this account or not?
Uh, those would typically be operating because cloud-based almost always is the company's best effort to get you into a subscription model where you pay monthly. Uh, and those models are, I would believe, I, I believe, uh, firmly in the operating budget. Marty, I'm not sure how you feel about it, but, um, software subscriptions traditionally would be, uh, an operating expense, correct?
Right, that's an operating expense.
Right, okay. So it would not be out of this. So, I can, I can put it there for you. So, so you used to be able to buy QuickBooks, you had the program. Now it's all online.
Yeah.
So, so it's an operating expense because it happens monthly and it's for something you use up constantly.
Except you can't get internet.
Yes.
You can still get it.
Yeah, but i- if there was a large expense for something, um, that was outside of this list, then absolutely. I mean, that's a good question, Catherine, right? Because cloud computing, you know, we should have a discussion about whether or not some of that might apply, but, uh, if we have a big expense that's technology-related that we're not, it's not in front of us yet, this could be a useful fund for that. Uh, and I did note, um, on every single one of these that the select board does have the authority to add or modify the uses, um, and of course, being a policy and involving other boards and committees, it'd be good to do that in concert and discussion, but, um, again, this is a select board policy, so you do have control over what's in here and what's not, so.
And do you have a plan? Uh, this is general question. So if we are under the minimum or over the maximum, do you have a guideline in this plan for what the suggested action is? Like consider the over or underage within six months or?
Not currently, not currently. I think the budget process is where my vision of this leading was that it would be, we would be looking at this during the budget season. I would, we would update the balances. Um, and sometime during our first capital planning meeting, we would run through and say, you know, what is our, our, our plan say for capital? What do our reserve balances, uh, have, uh, in them? And, and then have that discussion at that time and say, well, we've got five thousand dollars more than we need in this account, so maybe we shouldn't budget anything. Maybe we should draw some down. Um, I, I see it happening that way.
Well, and I know one of the things we've talked about for several years is the open space plan. Um, not the plan, sorry, the open space fund. And, you know, so if we have this sum of money that's sitting there and it's not used for some length of time, maybe we should have a sort of a semi-formal review policy, you know, if, if account balances have not been used for X number of months, years, we should consider this. Just so that things don't get stuck someplace and because it's somebody's pet project or it was something that the town was really interested in at one time, but circumstances have changed, so we're no longer interested in that.
Typically kind of have unwritten rule anyway that if that money's not, you put it back into, give it back to the taxpayers or?
We'll put it back into the general fund, right? But I think we ought to come up with some sort of a, I, I think, as you said, when we go through the next budget process and we're looking at that, I think it would be good for us to be thinking about what do we want for the guidelines? Because we know that the membership changes on the select board and on the budget committee. And you won't always have that institutional knowledge to come to the table, so having a guideline would be helpful.
Yeah, so I did make a note, basically saying just what you did, that, um, that we would be, that in the description of how this policy is intended to be used, I would say that this is a tool to be used in the capital planning phase of the budget process. Uh, and then that makes the most sense. And that way it's spelled out that that's part of the intent.
Yep.
And I guess one more thing on intent, uh, here, because it's, it's a policy, then there is a lot of intent, uh, kind of tied up in all this stuff. Uh, that I, I hope that, um, once we have this review with the budget committee and select board, we can then bring, um, uh, the, the, the draft policies back to the individual boards and committees that are affiliate, um, and say, cemetery committee, how do you feel about this guideline that we have? Um, I think it's more efficient to do it this way. That way the board can say this is a uniform approach. We're not singling anybody out. This is how we did it for everybody. But get that feedback, right, um, on, you know, where the, those boards and committees might feel these balances are or the uses. Again, because this is my best guess and, and I, I know a fair amount about this stuff, but not everything by, by a long shot, so.
Yeah, and I, and another advantage of doing it during the budget process is that you can look at the balances, the total balances in these types of accounts compared to the, um, unencumbered fund balance. You know, when that's high, maybe you can leave more or put more aside for special purposes. If that drops down too low, well, maybe we can't afford to, to squirrel away so much money for specific things, or some specific things at least.
It's a good point, Marty. I'm making a note that I think it is important to, to, in this policy, discuss that relationship to the undesigned fund balance. So I think that's a good point.
And it could be the board's responsibility to change any minimums or maximums or edit anything on these.
Yep.
Right. Yeah, so we need to make sure that we do that following capital discussion. Hopefully discuss it then, so that everybody's involved. Okay, on cemetery.
Yeah, I'm gonna live forever, so I don't care.
It sounds reasonable to me. I mean, repairs can be incredibly expensive, so I think having a good high, uh, a high maximum is important here.
Yeah, there's, I mean, we had, back actually before my time on the cemetery committee, an engineer come and look at a couple of the major stone walls. And she gave us at that point an estimate of like a hundred thousand dollars to do one of them should have completely collapsed as opposed to just sag, which is what it's doing now.
Doing a fine job of it, too.
Okay. Okay, we'll slide down to capital equipment leases. This is.
Like our copiers and stuff, right? Does that, that include in that?
Um, we've been using this for things like the town truck or, um, a holder, um, stuff like that. Lawn mower, when we bought the Zero Turn John New, we had a three-year lease, uh, things like that, yeah. Yeah, and Teresa, um, I'm gonna call, call you a little bit. We haven't had a chance to talk about this, uh, in any great detail, but if you have something that you want to add about any of these, um, feel free to jump in and, and say so.
I think the second draft is.
So Eric, would it be worth, um, mentioning in here sidewalk equipment, sidewalk clearing equipment?
There's a sidewalk count.
Oh, is?
Um, well, there, there is, but I mean, I think that we could, um, municipal equipment, including trucks, tractors, skid steers, mowers, et cetera. So I guess I could add sidewalk equipment to that, so I'll make a note to add sidewalk clearing.
I, I don't really want to say plowing because we don't have a public works department. I mean, we do plow our municipal properties, but.
Yeah, we do. Um, um, so I'll, um, I'll add that in there, um, try to be a bit more broad about, uh, about what that includes.
Okay. It does.
All right. Um, so that is page three, okay, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, capital equipment reserve.
Good.
Purchase and major repair.
Yeah, and so the major repair, I did repeat some of that language. Um, major repair would, would be things, you know, that, that wouldn't fall into the operating. So if we, uh, a hose goes on a, on a piece of equipment, that's not coming out of this account, that's coming out of operating. Uh, but if an engine goes, uh, or a, um, a wheel assembly from the, you know, um, yeah, um, th- then that might, that would be what I would consider like a major capital item. Um, and some of these we'll have discussions of when it comes up for select board, um, uh, voting to approve a warrant, right? You can say, well, Eric, why is this coming out of capital instead of operating or vice versa? Uh, so those discussions can, can happen at that time, too.
All right, moving on to fire department.
I was just wondering if that's a small maximum balance.
Uh, well, that's a good question. Um, i- it would be if we didn't traditionally lease or not lease, but, um, uh, bond it for fire trucks. So the reason, the reason why I'm comfortable with this, and we're gonna have some of these discussions too, right, around all these accounts or many of them, uh, is that, uh, because we bond, we don't have to have that amount of money. We don't have to have a half a million dollars in the bank, and I think that's, in this case, a good thing, right? Um, but, uh, and I do talk to Lee, um, about, about these, um, things and, and I expect we'll have more discussions as we move this stuff again back to the committees and the groups. But, uh, Lee has often said that he would like to see fifty to a hundred thousand dollars in, in that account. Um, so it's, it's based on that experience that he has, but, um, if the board thinks that a higher threshold is appropriate, maybe we should be looking at that, yeah.
I, I just don't know how much things cost. I feel like when something goes.
It costs a lot, but like, like Eric said, I mean, any big item would, would be voted on, bonded. That's more of a get you through the year.
Yeah.
If Eric, if, uh, the fire chief, this could, thinks between fifty and a hundred's good, I'm good.
Yeah. Especially now that we've stabilized the building, right? Because the building was a big part of this earlier on. A couple of years ago, we were, this account went up and went down and we had money going in and it was, um, you know, sizable, sizable. Um, so this is a, a threshold that, that is reflective of some stability in the buildings and the equipment, right?
Sounds good.
So, yeah.
Okay, roads capital.
Can I have to check?
Oh, sorry, staying on it?
That example of, you know, the fire wrench, uh, under normal circumstances, as Eric said, it's handled by bonding. But using that as an example, what happens if we have an emergency situation? Where the fire truck, something terrible goes wrong with it. Wh- what I'm getting at is that in the, under the general provisions, not for any particular fund, but the general provisions, I think there should be something about the select board having the flexibility to, uh, go outside of the normal procedures with these funds. That if it's something that we've got to get done immediately, that this, you know, just with knowledge, the select would could do whatever it takes. It's legal.
Definitely have emergency funds for that purpose.
Well, they're earmarked in these categories, so we're not supposed to take the cemetery funds and use them to get a fire truck.
They wouldn't go very far.
Well, I mean, we had.
Don't we have an emergency fund, just like a general?
Well, that's what our, our operating fund is, really.
But I, I'm just suggesting that that might be something to have under the general, the general procedure, the general structure, not in relation to any particular fund that's a, as a, as a fund, but just in general, that the select board, you know, has to be in a position to take whatever steps are necessary if we have a really emergent, a genuine emergency situation. And not be bound by uh, other, other considerations.
There was a town somewhere around us, Franklin County, I think, who lost their fire truck. Did their fire station burn down and they lost their truck? And so they borrowed a truck from, it was a dump truck. It was a plow truck, it wasn't a fire truck. Their garage burned down.
Oh, that was Union.
Okay. In any case, so, you know, if we lost our plow truck that we're about to get this coming month, um, you know, there's insurance, but that doesn't give us the authority to buy a new one. And so we would have to find the fund somewhere, yes, because we would need it. And we would probably not want to have to call a special town meeting to do that. But can you buy one was the issue that town had because there weren't any, anywhere. Right.
Yeah.
And so then can you lease one? Can you buy one from another town or whatever? So I think that's what Marty's talking about, is giving us the permission to do that.
Yeah, I can, I can work on language around that. I mean, I would say that under emergency situations, we have the emergency operations plan that, that is kind of a first tier, um, that, that convenes and calls for the select board to be taking that financial role um, in a, a major emergency. And, and so that's kind of spelled out in that plan to some extent as to how that would happen. Um, but I would say that's, I mean, a special town meeting is a perfectly good option, uh, in an emergency because we, we do have to follow those, um, those, um, you know, uh, the laws that we have around expending money, so.
Understandable reasons to buy a station for instance. It wouldn't be like mismanagement of the board, you know?
Well, I see what Marty's saying. I see what you're saying, Catherine. I'll, I'll work on some language to maybe, uh, touch on that. Yeah, um, and maybe reference the emergency operations plan as kind of an outlet. Um, what, you know, that's where some of this stuff is specified for how we manage funds in an emergency, so. Roads?
Thank you, Sean.
Uh, so this is a big one, yeah. Um, and I did increase the amount here. I think I had originally said five, fifty thousand to five hundred thousand, but.
I think that's good.
Way things are going, um, we, we've spent over five hundred thousand in a single year, uh, two years ago when we did Church Road work, so, um, that higher threshold does make sense to me.
And I honestly think that's one the public can probably get behind us having more money set aside for roads because everyone in Reed Field appreciates the roads that we have and we've spent a lot on them over time. And so it's, it's tangible.
You don't have to go far to find a best.
Right.
Bigots of dollars and damage to a major road.
Yeah.
Sidewalks?
Right, so this is for construction, essentially.
Yes, and I think that long-term we might, we might end up having, um, some, some other stuff in here, but I think that for right now, uh, the next foreseeable future, uh, it is just the, um, uh, just the construction. Uh, it may make sense in twenty years to start putting money aside for, you know, a, a rehab, right, of Main Street. Or in twenty-five years for a rehab of, or thirty years for a rehab of Church Road. But for right now, this is very much, uh, um, an account for, um, managing that construction of the sidewalk on Church Road.
We'll have Marty take care of it in thirty years. He's gonna be alive.
I assume that if we need to, we would like crack seal this sidewalk or if something happened to a section of it, we would just repair it.
Yeah, so if, if there was, I mean, anything minor damage would be operating, right? So we would, if there's cracks and that needed to happen, absolutely, that would be operating. Um, if it was crack sealing of everything and we had a lot of cracks, then maybe we could look at that and, and, and put it under, under here, but, uh, again, it's the, it's the scope of that type of work that really matters. Same thing with roadwork, right? Um, traditionally, um, filling in a, a washout would not be, uh, a capital item, but, uh, if we're doing work on Plains Road like we're, we have an RFP out for right now, to do major ditching work and hardening off and some culvert replacement all at the same time, all those little bits individually would, would normally be under, you know, an operating type budget, but when you add them together and it's a cohesive project, then that's where you tip the scales and you go into that next level of, of having an op, a, a. then that's where you tip the scales and you go into that next level of having an op, a capital, excuse me, project.
Okay. Town buildings. You know, Eric, I think something that would be interesting, I don't know how it fits in. Maybe it goes in the notes section, is to mention that there are schedules like for roadwork and for town buildings in the, in the CIP. Because that's something that has come up over time, you know, well, why are we going to replace the windows in the town office? For instance. Okay, because they were put in twenty-five years ago, so we need to look at them and evaluate, are they still worthy? And if they are, okay, let's move it out. And if they're not, okay, let's fix them.
Can that be an appendix that's noted in the notes section?
So I think we do have the CIP itself references an appendix. I'm gonna skip back and just check. I think I had an idea about that. Let's see, where is it?
But like even in the, for roads, that's not in the CIP, the actual roads listing.
I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if we just make a note that there is a separate specific schedule of planning, not of, we have to do it, but it's thought of. Right, it leads people to the next appropriate link.
Yep.
Instead of someone saying, gee, it'd be nice if you had a road inventory. Okay, well, we have one, let's just list it.
No, that's a great suggestion.
Anything else on this one?
Town properties.
So fairgrounds, and I will say that this, this account really was originally put in place because we had separate accounts for managing things like the Torsey Pond Nature Preserve and the town forest. But we had zero dollars set aside for capital for the fairgrounds, zero dollar, other than, you know, a few hundred dollars left over from the original project for a flagpole and things like that. So this was really built to meet the need of these other town properties that weren't under the, I guess, you know, oversight or stewardship of conservation or other entities. But I think that the fairgrounds project really does expand and kind of put an exclamation point on the need for this account. And as I said, Sean, this, we will be running the, the fairgrounds project through this account primarily.
Well, then I think our maximum balance needs to be increased.
What do you think, one, one million dollars?
I think, well, yes.
I think for the, for the next little while.
For the next two years, it should be a million because that's what we are asking for funding for.
Yep.
And that doesn't cover anything that's there for the other properties, so that it's reasonable.
Without definitions, we're waiting on that committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of it does.
Does open space have its own?
It does.
Okay.
It does, yeah.
But I do have thoughts about when we get there, too, that there's some overlap.
Because all of those things are actually counted as open space.
Yeah, and so I did try to address that point, Dave, because I tried to say specifically excluding Torsey Pond Nature Preserve, Town Farm Forest, and those funds through other programs, right? So, so I, I, I see exactly what you're saying, I completely agree. And what I don't want to do is have overlap, right? Because then it gets, we're back to this confusion and we're back to having maybe in some, in some ways, too much money in some areas, right? So I completely agree with that. Is there anything else you think we could limit? Because we talked about recreation amenities, things like that, that are. Or do you think we should wait and see what the open space committee has said?
I think we should revise it.
Careful for the horse if we don't, if we don't really have a definition of what the open space is for.
Yeah.
Rate the definition.
We'll have to look at it when we get to that one. Eric, the library park, does the library have anything to say about what happens in the library park?
They do events there occasionally, but no, I mean, really, I'm, I'm trying to take a very clean approach with this and say that town property is town property. Just because a piece of property is near a building doesn't necessarily mean that's the, the stewardship or the ownership or anything like that. So I do try to treat that in the mill stream park. Mill Stream Park and the Library Park are really kind of in similar categories of being just unique little places that we have some responsibility for, but there's no, I mean, we almost feel like saying that Historic Society would be the affiliate for the, the mill stream, right? But.
But would the library board not work, though, under the affiliate boards and committees?
No, because it really isn't, it's not a library park. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a town park near a library building. They have a ping table there once in a while, but it's really not intended to be a part of the library.
They do have their storyboards there, but I'm fine with the way you're delineating it. I just wanted to ask.
Yep, yeah, and if, I mean, if you feel differently, then certainly, you know, we can change it. But I, I like to keep it separate.
Well, I didn't like it when the library park wasn't anybody's. And I used to bring my lawnmower down from Kent Hill to mow it because the town wouldn't mow it because we didn't have any money. It was just silly. You know, and so town properties need to be designated and maintained by the town. That's just, they don't have to be seen by any one group as owning it, it's the town.
Transportation.
It's a good thing someone is doing this.
It's timekeeper.
Yeah, so he's on it. Eric, how much are we bringing in? You probably have this in here from the three towns each year.
Oh, for transportation capital, that's a good note. I will make a, I'll add that.
I think it's.
It's ten percent of the operating budget. So probably thirty to forty thousand dollars annually.
So the one fifty is probably fine.
Well, so if we, so thirty, forty thousand is coming in for capital from other towns and we're another third.
That's all inclusive, that's all three.
That's all three.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I was like, well, that's.
And then, and then we like pay the, the JBL, is that what it is?
JCB at the back.
JCB backhoe out of the capital.
What is JBL? I know, I know the acronym.
Is that a speaker?
Oh, yeah, speakers.
High end hi-fi.
Age friendly?
So this is where we transition.
Yes, it's first ninety-eight.
From, from, from ninety-sevens to ninety-eights, right? So this is our first.
Ninety-nines.
Or ninety-nine, sorry, ninety-eight, ninety, ninety-seven is trust funds.
Okay, now we're in special revenues.
Yeah, so it is an important distinction. Thank you, Teresa. It is an important distinction because these are, you know, intended to be managed differently. So if you go back to those definitions that we had early on about the account types, that's where you get the background on them. But basically, these are much more flexible than the capital reserve accounts, which are very fairly rigid in their, in their use. So I just wanted to make that point.
Is that the biggest donate grant they've ever got, age friendly, five thousand?
Currently, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and, and we, we plug away at giving them a thousand or two thousand a year, depending on what their balances are. So it's been sufficient, but I will say that that group continues to expand. They're probably going to be applying for a grant this year that could be ten to twenty thousand dollars, so.
I thought that that maximum is a little low because I feel like they're very active in pursuing grants.
At least ten thousand.
Yeah.
Yep. So you, yeah, okay.
Is how much, ten? Nine, so probably fifteen then. Because if they've got nine and they get another grant for five thousand.
It'd be over.
Yeah, I mean, and again, it's just a guideline, if we have a grant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But I, I think that you're right to increase that.
They, I just feel like in my time volunteering in town, they've had things consistently.
Yes.
That they've got, that they're expending. And so just want to make sure we're accurately demonstrating that.
Yeah, so maybe twenty-five thousand?
I think twenty, easy.
Twenty, okay.
So they're going to be at fifty.
Right, it's going to be quickly there.
Okay. We'll go to twenty thousand, there we go.
ARPA. Yeah, that's the one I was mentioning earlier, but it should be reworded to just be federal.
And I think two fifty is a fine number because we have no idea.
Yeah.
If the federal dollars started rolling into Reed Field, one, I'd find it hard to believe. But two, we can always change the maximum. Conservation land. Chart here.
Conservation currently has. Yeah, they currently have eleven, eleven thousand. But will that be spent for anything particular?
So they do have periodic projects. The, the thing that happens here is noted at the bottom, this is primarily funded, it's really primarily for the farm, town farm forest. And they get between five thousand and twenty-five thousand dollars for a harvest. The higher numbers are very unusual lately, as Dave probably tested. Lumber, lumber yields from woodlots aren't what they used to be. But they, they, they do a very good job of keeping this at a fairly stable balance. They don't let it get too big and they harvest when, when they, when they need to or when they think it's appropriate for the health of the forest. But that, that balance has been pretty static and has been fairly well traditionally treated. So what do you think about that balance?
So should it be, should we make the maximum fifteen thousand? So everyone okay with changing that one up to fifteen?
They're doing harvest in a couple of years.
Yeah.
Okay, thirteen, we'll up that to fifteen thousand.
Dog vaccination fund. We get it in, then the dog, the vet comes and we spend it out, right?
Yep. And this is, we haven't sold many bracelets for a few years now, but.
This is for free raking, somebody needs, we know somebody in the community that can't afford to have their dogs or cats or whatever, rabies.
And we currently have more than five hundred in there.
I've got almost seven hundred.
Yep.
So we ought to make it.
Get a thousand.
A thousand. We'll just keep round numbers, right?
Yep. Enterprise funds.
Do we have any people who are paying back loans they were given?
No, or, I mean, yes, we do, we have, still have one or two, right? Two, yep. Yep.
And it's currently got essentially forty-seven in it. So that seems appropriate.
It's pretty simple, that one.
Yep.
And is that part of things that are in like the SEDARS? So we're making money on the, on this money that we're just holding, waiting?
Yes, so all of this could be considered in that pot. Because what we have is the money that's at the bank and then it gets transferred out. So we have, there's a dear course difference between how we account for money and how it lives in the, in the banks. And, and we have, these funds are a large component of our account balances. And so, yes, a portion of these, you could easily say is, is, is there and helps serve the purpose of feeding some of those investments that we have.
Okay. Grant some planning.
That's good to me. I think anything that come, I think that's a, we will spend as it comes, right? I mean, anything we're working on, it seems to be.
The ten thousand that we got from the state for the planning board, we didn't spend all of that, correct?
No, we probably have about five thousand dollars left, but I'm not sure we tracked that in any.
Do we have to give it back?
We spent about five or six thousand dollars, I think we have three or four, at least three or four left. But we can check on that and we will have to give it back at some point.
There's only twenty-eight in the account, so.
Under, for grants and planning?
Yeah.
So then I'm guessing that that money didn't get into this account, which is fine, we can, we can take a look at that.
Heating assistance.
Oh, I want to go back to that. I like the note, those funds are applied as opportunities arise and not to offset the cost of planned projects in other areas. So like when we are doing fundraising for the ball field, we're not using our, our grant writing money for that. That's coming out of ball field money or volunteer time or something.
So that's ideally how it works, yeah. I mean, we actually have used a little bit out of this fund for that project because we didn't have a project until officially this.
Tuesday.
So Tuesday, so, so we have had to do a little bit of that. But again, now that we're in that phase, we can fundraise, we can put the money for the project in, in the appropriate account and not have to draw down on this anymore. Yeah, so that is the intent of, yeah, probably the intent there, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Heating assistance.
Yeah, we need to do something about that. How come we can't give more of this away?
We, we, we.
Was that, oh, Catherine?
We, we do try. But part of this is that there are basic expectations of documentation and we can't always get that. And the other piece of this is that the program was established, you know, by, by the select board, I think with voter input at one point. And so there are criteria that are, that are there. It's intended to be for utilities almost exclusively. And the intent is that it's paid back if people can. And they oftentimes don't, but that's okay because we have been having a lot more money come in than going out. But basically, we ask people to apply for general assistance so we can ascertain their level of need. So that even if they're not eligible for GA, they can still potentially be eligible for this, these resources. But then at least we know that there's, that we've done everything we can to help them. Because oftentimes, people don't know what they need or they don't know how to manage their finances to avoid coming back again, right? So this is, part of this is education and helping people learn to manage, you know, finances. So we do go through a little bit of a process, but in the end, if someone comes and says, I need five hundred dollars for oil, if they're not a repeat applicant, we generally would say, yes, you know, but we'd like to know more about you and how we can help you more. So we do put a lot of effort into giving the money away. Just sometimes people either A, have the money already, or or it might not be, it might be, for example, for someone who has a five thousand dollar electric bill. Don't ask me how they get there, but we've seen several people coming with three, five, eight thousand dollar bills. And they want us to pay it and we just say, if we put that money in, it's never coming back. So we can't, it's not a good investment of town resources to throw money into a hole like that. So there's a lot that goes into it.
Okay.
Eric, the only issue is we have twenty-one thousand in there now, the maximum balance is ten.
Yeah, so the reason I, I kind of made that line is to show that we do have a lot of money in there. And I think what we ought to be doing is taking the bottle money and putting it towards another nonprofit or another public purpose for five years or something until this balance becomes more reasonable. Because there's no reason for us to have twenty thousand dollars and that we've never had more than five hundred or a thousand in any given year of need. And maybe that doubles or triples, right? Worst case scenario, we still have five years worth of funds in there.
So do we need to change that?
So you're talking about not redesignating it, but putting future funding into a different pot?
Yeah, so I, I would put future funding into a different pot. Or maybe try to find a way to use some of that money for another purpose that is affiliated. But I mean, I think that the. Affiliated, but I mean, I think that the the best thing to do is probably just let it sit there and draw it down over time, but not put any more into it. Yeah, cuz I think that ten thousand dollars for a for a heating systems fund is a reasonable annual threshold, right? Because we're looking at generally annual numbers here. Um so I guess tha- that's the reason why I think that um the the threshold makes sense. Because it that's probably the right number. We just have twice twice what we need.
Well, then let's move some of that bottle money cuz we've got plenty of places.
Well, such as?
Fairgrounds. Did you expect me to say something different? Basketball court, softball fields, some trail work, yeah, parking, yeah.
Well, it was not taxpayer funded, I mean raised, it was all donation money.
Yeah, so I do think it should stay very much where it is. Don't draw it down, don't use other places, but going forward, we can say, hey, bottle money is gonna be going towards this cause. Instead of.
So that's not something we.
Yeah, somebody should know, yeah.
So that's something if someone wanted to, when we go back into our regular meeting tonight, could make a motion for.
And and we could do it tonight, or we could talk about it in concert with the solid waste committee discussion about bottle funds. Cuz a lot of that money is actually coming from other towns too, so. Does that sound okay Catherine, or do you wanna do it tonight?
I'm not saying I wanna do it anytime. I was just saying that people could do that cuz we can't do it right now.
Sure.
Okay, legal services.
Okay. Uh, pretty self-explanatory.
It's pretty high, too.
It is, uh but I I will say that um. A a good superior court case can cost fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. Um so I think that it's it's.
Quickly.
It's good to have, I won't say a a deterrent in place, but um I think it's good for people to know that we take the legal defense of the town seriously. And it's important for us to have money there so that if something happens, which could happen just like that, um that that we have the resources to defend the town. And um so I do think that even though it's high, I think it's a reasonable threshold.
Well, I mean, we have more than, we have more than the balance, though.
Yes, there's fifty-seven.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna raise that maximum. I think that's.
So it might mean that we.
In reserve.
I I see, so what that would mean is we rather than change the thr- threshold, you might just say next budget season, um we're gonna draw more out of that account, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good.
Right.
Yeah, so we we we've already started doing that. That's right, Jen, thank you.
Right, you did do that this year.
Yeah.
But we should continue doing that to keep it under fifty.
Library operations.
What's its current balance?
Yeah, ten, twelve, twelve thousand, yeah.
It's good to me.
Yep.
Local tax relief. So. How how much do we actually give people?
Uh I think we only had one or two applications, right, Teresa? Yeah, maybe less than a thousand?
And this just seems like way more, we have way more money in it.
Oh, right.
What's that, fifteen years?
At that pace, yeah.
Yeah.
And we did, that's the policy that we just changed this year and made it a little bit easier, but it's still pretty hard to get it.
You have to be eligible for the state circuit breaker program, which is something like eighty percent of AM area needing income. There there are pretty clear guidelines and actually, I mean, a lot of people in town uh qualify for it, just not many are taking advantage of it. So I think that that's really more of an education thing than a um than a eligibility issue.
Well, I, yes, I hear you, but I think it's, people in Reed Field don't wanna come forward and ask for help. We have found for decades. Um they prefer to find a way to pay their taxes without asking someone else to do it for them.
Which is.
Too bad.
I guess, you know. One sentence kind of good, that rule, but it's too bad if they're really stretching themselves and put themselves in a rough situation.
Right, so we would have to really target. How we advertise that cuz you wanna get, I mean, a personal message is really the best when you have someone who's struggling and.
I did talk to the state about um uh that they won't give us their list, uh which is the first question I asked. They're not allowed to do that. Uh but um I think that if we reach out to them again, we could uh see if they can let people in Reed Field know. Again, they're handling thousands of these things, so to have them say, oh, if you're from Reed Field, here's a piece of paper about local program. We can talk about maybe trying to get that moved ahead, but i- it is a challenge to get that uh out there. Other than um we could do tax bill inserts like we've done in the past, uh things like that.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I don't, I think any.
What's that, Teresa? More of incentive, yeah. Yep.
Yeah, it's probably not appropriate for us to do any sort of outreach based on people who are late paying their taxes or are up for foreclosure.
I mean, absolutely, when 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 people are having trouble, um we don't necessarily send it out with every list of a hundred and twenty-five people that are late. Right? But when it comes to foreclosure time, we we do have discussions. Kristen calls them, I call them. Um and we do talk about options and resources and things like that and a- ask if they need assistance. So um that um that does happen and will continue to happen.
Heritage days.
Nope. Why is there more money in heritage days right now?
We didn't do as much last year in terms of spending money, I think.
Yeah, and some years are better for fundraising than others, uh but um i- in 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 my view, this has always been a an account that. Um people have wanted to keep clean. They haven't wanted to see five or ten thousand dollars a year being spent on. Um on account balances. I guess that's a big picture question too, right? It might, it might make sense to look at some of these accounts in the sense of, well, what's the annual expenditure? Um and if we're spending five thousand dollars a year on on heritage days and having five thousand in reserve, might be a reasonable amount, right? Um I'm not sure if that answers your question, Sean.
Well, I just thought we all, we pretty much the last four, five years have spent. Five thousand dollars.
I- it's been a little bit less.
Just a little bit.
Just a little less, which is good. I mean, you don't wanna go over budget, right?
Yeah, no, of course.
Um but but that money no longer carries forward, so we're gonna have to be actively funding it. Again, a lot of these accounts, uh we're gonna have to look at actively funding. Because they don't just bill anymore like this one has.
And I think it's fine where it is.
Yeah.
From the budget.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, gotcha. For for this fiscal year, right? Yeah.
Okay.
That was probably what we've made, selling hot dogs.
All right, moving on.
Open space.
Yeah, so I did try to spend a little bit of time on this and take my best shot at uh clearing up some muddy waters. But uh I'm I'm very much open to suggestions and I think that that, uh as Dave said, and and I think we all agree, that committee is gonna have a lot of, a lot to say about this scope.
Yeah, I would like to just have something stated as of uh, I don't know, allowable expenses in development with fairgrounds working group or something right now.
Open space.
Yeah, just as part of that, you know, I know that we're not signing this today, but I just think anybody that's reviewing should know that it's a actively worked on.
The open space working group.
Piece right now.
I will uh, yeah, affiliate staff, do I have an affiliate group? I don't have them on there yet, so um that's a good, I'll make sure I add open space to page twenty-two. And also reference the work in progress.
Eric, we did not appoint that committee tonight.
No, well, we still haven't had very many applications.
Did each committee who's sending a representative have to have an application?
Um, we did ask for them just to have um a liaison appointed, but uh what I will do is follow up. And remind them that we want them to send a representative for these.
You know, conservation's confused if there's supposed to be a application, to be honest, or not. And I know K L T has nominated someone.
Oh, good.
So they both have someone ready to go, they just opt really throw what they're supposed to do right now.
Yeah, let's make sure we get that group going. As we had talked about, we want them to at least meet, to figure out when they're gonna meet. They don't have to actually meet meat in the summer, but.
Recreation.
Now, this is a special revenue account, donations, appropriations, grants, access.
Eric, so they're sitting at. God, I'm getting confused. And it's the, I know that there was some excess hopes in the year coming up to spend down. Uh, yes. So field turf and grounds management. Uh I'm I'm really just thinking about the future of the space. And that's there, if there got field turf and grounds management. Is that gonna cover that stuff?
It really depends. Um uh and and that would be for major work, uh like a full reseeding or irrigation or something like that, right?
Or even a mower.
Or even a mower, yeah.
A mower for that area.
I I I will point out, but uh you, if if you guys really wanna have the um, the 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 best numbers, look to the third column that doesn't have color in it. And that's what we're gonna expect you to have at the end of this current fiscal year. So they're really only gonna have twelve thousand at the end of FY twenty-five. Because we're pulling money out for other uses this year coming up, so that's something to consider, yeah.
I I think it should be higher, like double maybe, because you're putting in a million dollar ball field and you're gonna be asking people to donate. And you're, uh if anybody read it, we're gonna have adult basketball and pickleball and.
Well, so so I guess um this is, so this again primarily was funded through um in the notes. Um through youth sport registration fees, right? So that the intent of this program or this account is primarily for supporting youth sports. This like board, I think, also has made a a commitment that that is, I think, reasonable, but there's some flexibility that that tax dollars not go into the construction of this stuff. But in the future, having some ongoing maintenance um would be appropriate, but that really ought to be out of the operating budget, not out of capital. So what what we're we're kind of narrowing that focus so that you have things that support. These recreational activities but are maybe more than five thousand dollars. So I think you're absolutely right that a mower. Um would be a a reasonable expense if it lived and had its sole purpose of maintaining that um field. But I I would probably say I don't think that's a good idea cuz we've got two zero turns and a whole bunch of pushmowers. But in any event, um I think it's important to to make sure that you're keeping that scope.
Yeah, I just was also say that, you know. The goal, I think, of adding the community program coordinator is to expand on what we currently offer in town for recreation. And increase revenue in that realm.
Absolutely.
So in order to do that with increased space, increased revenue, we need to have, I think there, I think that that special revenue budget has to be a little bit different. And the thoughts.
Well, and you're not gonna just have youth fees, you're going to have adult fees.
Yeah.
So, and I think, I just think it should be at forty thousand, say.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so again, that's what I wanna point out, the 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 fees, if there are extra fees at the end of the year. Um and I'm not sure if I made this note here or not, you might want to, so excess revenues, we did make that point. So in most of these accounts, the the extra extra revenue would not go into the reserve account, but I think you're absolutely right, Sean. That because of the nature of those fees, it's appropriate for that money to go into this account. If it, if it exceeds the revenue estimate, so if you estimate five thousand dollars in revenue and you make sixty-two fifty, then you have twelve fifty that would go into this account. Instead of just rolling back at the general fund, right? So so you you you're right, I think that um you you. Yeah, I know, it's terrible, isn't it?
So.
So we will talk about that one, but I think that, yeah, yeah, but the auditors did suggest that that was an option in some of our original discussions. Um so I think that that's that's, again, only for excess revenues, right? So it would be one adjustment at the end of the fiscal year. It's okay, Teresa, it's good.
I think that the allowable expenses needs to also say adult, not just youth. Because we talked about the basketball court being for adults also and pickleball and. Maybe a women's softball league starting up and.
And you'd like to see this balance go up to forty thousand or something in that range for um.
Well, something higher when you're gonna consider.
I just think we think, I think, geez, can I say think one more time? There is a possibility for with the community program coordinator.
Yep.
To see that exceed the twenty thousand. In a short period of time.
What was that? Build it, may will come?
Yep.
We can only hope.
So and I guess the question though is, are you talking about like the 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 total revenues? Because this this wouldn't just be for youth sport fees.
This is the excess.
This is the excess only and and only if we can really come to that agreement.
And then that would build what we could. Add to the equipment, supplies, development of programming.
And I guess that's the piece you wanna think about, as if do you think that in any given fiscal year, you would spend more than twenty thousand dollars on things that are not part of the operating budget? That's the, that's the way I would frame it.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna buy a concession trailer.
Yeah, okay, so uh we'll just. Forty thousand, I'll just do that, yeah.
Get Coca-Cola to sponsor it. Okay, rebel.
Nobody wants to think about that.
Trails, we can move on, that's okay, trails, trails, two hundred?
That might be a typo. I mean, Greg Dergan made me do it.
We're gonna have multi-level trails.
I think we were looking at twenty uh is probably.
They have four thousand, so yeah, twenty would be a lot more.
Because sometimes they get grants.
Yeah.
To build like the Torcy Pond thing.
It does, get one extra anyway.
Okay.
If not two. Twenty-five, okay.
Roads operating. So this is not for culverts.
Uh not unless it's affiliated with storm damage, for example.
Okay, so it's not the plains road, which is a preventative thing we're doing. It's for the ones we have to replace because they wash away in a storm.
It it's kind of, yeah, exactly. Uh when we talked to the auditor, um that they suggested that it might be helpful for us to be able to track some of that damage. Not in the operating budget where we currently have it, right? Cuz we just overspent that budget. Um uh but also have a relief for the operating budget, so um this kind of serves two purposes. And um I I don't know if that's enough or not. I think a hundred thousand dollars might be low, but again, we're wanting to fund.
Were we getting a thousand dollars in October?
Uh I think we were only, two years ago, we had one that was probably close to eighty, yeah, yeah.
And then we were forty thousand dollars Christmas?
Yep, forty to sixty, yeah.
Yeah, uh so I mean, if you had October and December, I'm pretty sure we exceeded a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
So make it.
I know we got a lot of it back eventually, seven months later, but I I'm a little nervous at a hundred thousand. I just think. We're not out of the rain.
No, but we are getting better prepared all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, yeah, no.
It doesn't mean we have to have it.
Yeah, we really have seventy right now, it's going down.
Yeah, just remember, when we have the budget discussion, you you start talking about how you're gonna fund these, you you wanna think about, well, you know, what's the. The parameters there, do you wanna fully fund it and you wanna partially fund it? Um but but yeah, I think a hundred fifty is reasonable.
Well, not all in one year. I'll answer that right now.
Well, then then that's part of the discussion, right? Because it it this, these are really are. Well, then then that's part of the discussion, right? Because it it this, these are really are intended to be either a one year or a one to two-year timeframe on most of these things. Maybe three at the far end. For. A carry, a a balance that you're gonna carry.
On the special revenue ones.
On the special revenue, yeah, yeah. These are, these are really kind of throughput. A lot of them are are more throughput.
We finished.
Yep.
So if we get reimbursement coming up for any of the stuff that's happened recently, that would go into that special revenue fund, right?
Uh yes and no. I mean, uh this year, I'd probably ask the auditors to put it. Onto our operating budget where we took the money out of to start with.
But with our new structure, if it was in there to begin with, we would be putting it back in.
Exactly. If it was under the new structure, we would have taken the 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 damage, that sixty or eighty thousand dollars out of this account. And then put the money back in when we got it. From FEMA.
Any closing comments from anybody on the discussion we've been having? Marty?
Okay, just a couple of quick points. When the uh grant money and donations and in-kind contributions. For the Fairgrounds project start to become real, I think you're gonna need a fairly complex set of accounts. Uh so that because the if these are ultimately federal funds. Uh and the reporting requirements can be really excruciating. You know, for example, how do you document in-kind contributions from a contractor that did some work for us? So I think that my suggestion is to uh have a good discussion with the auditors. Let them look at the the grant documentation and tell you, you know, what kind of accounting you're gonna need for that. Because it can be very, very complicated. Uh one other thing, um and this is just me, but uh using the term operating. In the account titles can blur the distinction between these reserves. And the active operating accounts. So I would, I would use, I would recommend using things like. Reserve, reserves in the titles to make it be clearer. And and finally. I think R H R Smith is a great ported firm. They're one of the the best for municipalities. Because they go beyond just ticking and tying numbers. So you can get an opinion, a good opinion letter on your audit. Um and you know, they really get into the management aspect, so I I think it's good that we have them as auditors. Uh but on the other hand, I would not look to them for advice on what the uh. The unexpended fund balance should be. Uh I just uh came across something that I had when I. Worked at Maine Municipal Association. It was from the Government Finance Officers Association about. Common misunderstandings about municipal financial statements. And if if you don't have a copy, I can give you my copy. And they say that this association of finance officers for municipalities. But. They they made a, they have a whole page talking about, don't accept that. Uh thirty-day, a sixty-day or two month, two twelfths standard. As to what your fund balance, unencumbered fund balance should be. That should, so I'm I'm just mentioning that. I hope that that's something that the board can look at, the way you've been looking at these special accounts. To make that a a project for the board and the budget committee, if uh if if you don't mind. So that you you have a standard. How do you know when you have too much or not enough? You know, how do you, how do you go about making that determination?
Well, it seems that if we have maybe more than the two twelfths, then some of these special accounts don't have to be as high. Because we've got more all the time. So that's the discussion.
That what the, what this, the Government Finance Officers Association is saying is don't accept that that. Two that two twelfths standard. That could be fine for town A. It could be not nearly enough for town B. Uh there's a whole lot of things that you have to look at and it is, you know, uh it is not an easy determination to make. But that's not for tonight. I'm just suggesting that that would be a good topic to follow up on this. When this time for it.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna call the. Uh joint workshop closed, if that's all right with everybody. We have ten minutes left on our agenda and we'll be finished. Very close to on time. So thank you to Marty and Andy for coming. You may leave if you'd like, or you may sit here and listen. That's fine. Um our future schedules.
As long as it doesn't say budget committee or cemetery committee or thirty mile river.
Eric, do you have the list of dates that you, Sean and I had discussed?
Uh not with me, unfortunately. Um I um.
I think I put them in my calendar, so. Item twenty-four dash one four six, consider schedule of upcoming select board meetings and workshops. Um like the dates we came up with were, if everybody's ready. Angelical, write these down, then we'll all have them. Um so seven twenty-two. Eight twelve. Nine sixteen. So, except for Jared.
Nine 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 twenty-three.
No, no, we picked just one for September.
I think you started with two and decided one would be better.
Oh, God, just.
So because we all just lived through the hard months of. March, April and May with lots and lots of meetings. Um and as long as Eric doesn't have pressing business that comes up, if the public needs us, then we'll have to have another meeting. You know, if there's a special issue where the public is waiting for us for approval.
I'll have to look at my notes and make sure we didn't, um because I'm not sure which one we had settled on, honestly, so.
Okay, that's what I wrote down. And then we tentatively set a date of the thirty-first for our retreat of July. On the conversation around that was. Not waiting so late in the year, so that if we're gonna plan things to do in the year, we have most of the year in front of us. If that makes sense. Um but didn't want to set any of these dates in stone because we didn't know who was going to be on the board. So considering those, the first one for July was the. Twenty-second?
Yep.
Does that work for everybody?
If it's open twenty-four hours from now, I'm gonna say yes, but.
Okay, and then August was.
Hold on, Steve's still checking the twenty-second, I think.
Well, people are allowed to miss meetings for excuse reasons, you know? It's okay. What was our August date?
Twelve.
Twelfth?
The day after, Monday after Heritage Days, there'll be so many great things to talk about.
Right. And then the sixteenth. Was two weeks after Labor Day. And then at that meeting, we should set our next quarters meetings at least. And we'll probably.
Budget schedule.
Start meeting in October. Well, actually, I think we're off and still just one meeting, October, November and December. I think somewhere in there, we get a second meeting, so maybe over the three months, we'll have four meetings.
December, we almost always have one because of Christmas and and November is usually one because of Thanksgiving, so.
Right.
Yeah.
But we usually have a budget C I P meeting in there, so that gets that extra meeting in, so still fairly late. Um the thirty-first of Sept- of July is a Wednesday. Um what are people's schedules in terms of time that we can get together? Like you work, you guys work, so.
And Catherine, is it, is it the second Friday that we do the um in August that we do the um summer residence meeting?
But it was the first.
Maybe it is the first.
It's the first because Heritage Days is the second weekend.
Yep, yep, so then um.
And now we know the trek is always the third weekend in June.
Always Father's Day weekend.
And the third weekend in August is always the balloon festival in Lewiston.
Not this year.
Yes, it is. It's back on.
It's back on?
It is. The cities of Lewiston and Auburn are doing it. It's a city project.
Four minutes to go for our city.
For volunteers. We should send some from Reed Field.
August second would be the summer residence meeting then as well.
So cemetery tour, what's that?
Wait a minute, did we come up with on the retreat? Can we do five o'clock?
No, five thirty.
Jared is five thirty, okay? So we can do five thirty to eight? Do we want? So this will involve food?
Yes.
This will involve food, good.
I usually buy pizza.
And we'll try to eat while we meet, so we don't have to stay later. And we'll come up with some sort of an agenda and get it to people.
Sounds good.
And ask for input, okay?
Cemetery tour?
Yes, five thirty to eight. So the cemetery committee is wanting the select board to come and view the cemeteries with them. So that we have a better idea of the scope of their work, what they've done and what they'd like to do. Are pretty close?
Yeah, yeah, they they mostly just want to show you what what we have and what they do.
Another really fun time is doing that with the roads. I did that twice, I think. We went out on on a cruise and saw roads and learned what, you don't need to know anything. Do construction stuff, but. And so they would like to do that sometime before it gets cold.
Can we schedule that maybe for like fall?
Well, we could do, we could do like a Saturday morning. Yeah, that's too late. So I think we're, I think they were thinking more August, September.
September.
Let's let's do September.
Yeah.
Do you want a weeknight or do you want a Saturday morning?
Okay, Saturdays are typically tougher, but yeah.
Sunday morning? Anybody partial to Sunday mornings?
Uh why don't we ask them for a selection of dates for September?
Okay.
And we can find.
That's a good approach, yeah.
I'd like to get, maybe they can tell us.
We should have kept Andy here on, in an approximate length of time and an approximate agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have one minute to do the last item. Consider any follow-up action subsequent to town meeting votes. That's listed for five minutes, so.
Do we have anything we need to take care of?
No, I mean Jerry's thing early on was was really under that item, so.
Motion to adjourn on time?
All those in favor? We are done. Eight forty-five, we are adjourned.